All right, good evening, everyone. It is now five o'clock. It's time to start our November 18, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. For the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Matilda Hernandez and Nick Castillo. They're students from Red Rock Elementary. If you can stand up here at the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now face your Texas flag. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Now for the moment of silence.
Thank you, Matilda. Matilda? Colin's gonna take your picture, real quick. If you can stand in front of the podium. All right, we're gonna have Chaplain Keatrick to come and do the invocation.
Lord, you said in your word, "Let not our hearts be troubled; but if we believe in God, believe also in you." So today, we come. Lord, we come with the assurance that you care about the details of our lives and the details of our city. Lord, you care about the one who just made the greatest economic decisions of their career. And, Lord, you care about the child who may be sleeping in uncertainties tonight in our city. Lord, we thank you, Lord, that your hand is in the midst of them both. Lord, we thank you that we have a city, Lord, that puts you first and know that you're the answer and you care for our needs. So we bless them tonight, Lord. We bless them in their decisions and the things that they choose, Lord, for the better and the welfare of our city. We thank you for it, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. All right, on to citizen comments. Are we still only at one?
Yeah.
All right, we have one citizen comment. It is Amy Mills. She wishes to speak. And it's in regard to Agenda Item 12A. Good evening. Can you please state your name and your address? And you'll have three minutes. I'll kinda wave my hand when you have 30 seconds, so you know when to wrap it up.
That sounds perfect.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amy Mills. I live here in Bastrop at 405 Cedar Street. And tonight, I am here to represent the Bastrop County Collaborative for Housing and Health. I work for Bastrop County Public Health Department. We're the lead agency of this multi-agency working group. There are 13 nonprofit organizations, as well as staff from the city of Bastrop, city of Belgan, city of Smithville. And we formed together back in January with a grant from the St. David's Foundation. So when we saw that Item 12A was on the agenda today, the kind of reconsidering of the code, we wanted to just say, hello, we're here, and let you know that the Bastrop County Collaborative for Housing and Health is working. And we've been working all year on bringing the community together to develop strategies and policy recommendations on how we could make housing more attainable and affordable for people at every stage of life in Bastrop. So we just wanted to say that we would love to share the results of that work with y'all when it's ready. It's not ready tonight. We're about 60, 75, maybe 90 days away from finalizing a policy recommendations report. And that is a recommendations report that's based on research that this collaborative has done this year on policies that other counties have engaged in to encourage the development of more attainable and affordable housing, as well as policies that may hinder the development of affordable and attainable housing. So we just wanted to say that we would love to share that information with y'all. We'd love to have a seat at the table in these conversations and that we would be happy to share all of those results with you as soon as they're finished. So that's what I wanted to share.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Nice to meet you all.
All right, that is it for citizen comments. Now throw on to our consent agenda items. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by root to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council members, for the record, are there any items that we would like to have pulled?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull 5K.
Anything else?
Yes, please. 5A through 5F, and then 5H.
All right, council members, any other? All right, Agenda Item 5A. Consider an act of under ordinance number 2025-82, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1.10, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 1.10.001 Parks Board, to add two ex officio positions to qualification with qualification criteria, and move to include on December 9, 2025, Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a discussion that was had at the seating of the boards and commissions, specifically the Parks Board. The intent was to add somebody from the county Parks Board. It's Councilmember Foster's understanding that is not a completely seated board, and then also to add somebody from the master gardeners list, as well as keep the vacant Parks Board seat. And so I'll let Councilmember Foster explain her concerns.
Sure, yeah. At the time, we made this recommendation, we were thinking that the Bastrop County had a Parks, had an active Parks Board, and they don't have one. All their seats expired in 2021. But what is formed, and it's kind of in its place, is called the Bastrop County, oh, sorry, Friends of Bastrop County Parks and Open Spaces. And it's a separate entity from the county. It has the support of the county, and the county participates in it, but it is a separate 501(c)(3). But that is the body, as I understand it, that is going to be representing the Parks and Open Spaces of Bastrop County going forward. And so I would like to make a recommendation for us to change our language, so that we can include someone from the Friends of Bastrop County Parks and Open Spaces Board, and not necessarily the Bastrop County in quotes Board. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, Sylvia.
No, no, but technically, the Commissioners Court could recommend somebody from this Friends of Bastrop County. Because the way the, the way the staff report reads, it just says county parks representative. And it's to enhance coordination between the city and Bastrop County.
Correct. And then the requirements, they wouldn't, right, they would meet the requirements on page 10 of our packet if, if they were designated by Bastrop, and if it went to Commissioners Court. Yeah, so they, the court would have to designate them.
Yep. So for this particular item, just the path forward is to get Commissioners Court to recommend somebody?
Right.
Or did you have different language in mind?
No, I just wonder if that creates an extra step and extra time. We know.
It does, but it, I'd rather it be legislative body to legislative body, as opposed to a nonprofit to a legislative body.
Sure, yeah. Knowing that they could designate whoever they want, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
If I could comment on that also, even though it's not official, it's incorporated as a nonprofit organization, as being stated. Bylaws are being drawn up. 501(c)(3) application has been submitted. So that being said, there's not any reason to not consider someone being appointed from Bastrop County.
I didn't follow the last sentence.
The bylaws are being drawn up, and a 501(c)(3) application are being submitted. Therefore, it would be appropriate, as our wording says, for someone to be recommended to be on our Parks Board, from the Bastrop County.
Okay. Did you have something, Mayor Broton?
Yeah. It does seem like there is, it's adding overhead to ask the Bastrop County to not to nominate someone. We kinda know who we want to do this anyway, so, you know, what, why do we need to go to the county to, to ask them to go through it in official process each time we need to appoint this person? It seems like we could just do it ourselves. And frankly, we could do it ourselves. This is our choice. So I guess I'm looking at it like that, is that we want to put someone on the Parks Board as a non-voting member because of their affiliation with Bastrop County. We, we know that they're affiliated, they know they're affiliated. This is the way it's being managed right now. If we forced the county to go through a process to put it on their agenda and nominate someone, they would nominate the same guy. So, I don't know, it just doesn't feel like it's necessary, this time or even long term.
So would you feel the same way about the master gardeners not having their person that they recommend also? Because that's also a recommendation, as far as the master gardeners go, and they need to be part of the Bastrop master gardener, so.
Yeah, so in my mind, the distinction is that to ask the master gardeners organization is an email, right?
I think the process is what Sylvia was saying. I think that's kinda what I'm understanding, right, Sylvia, that we just need to.
Yes, because the county parks representative could very well be their director of development services, could very well be somebody on their development services staff, their master planning staff, their comprehensive planning staff, maybe not necessarily a parks person, because the way it's written is, should have knowledge of county parks asset, planned improvements, and interlokal coordination. That could be anybody within the county development services. And so my, my concern was just letting a nonprofit, especially as it relates to the county, get on, is, it does add an extra step, yes, absolutely. But it also lends a little bit more credence, because Commissioners Court would have taken action.
I concur that it would add more credence, but I don't value the credence, because it's a non-voting member who's just gonna talk and give opinions.
But could sway the vote.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I'm, I'm okay as written, if, if that's what the council wants to do. And this is our first year. If we need to change the rules later on, that's okay, too.
Well, no, as written requires that we have to go to the county to ask them to nominate someone. And I'm suggesting that's overkill.
Mayor Broton, what I would like for you to think about is, we are, we, all of us aren't gonna be here forever.
Yeah.
We're starting a process. This process needs to be as legitimate as it can going in the future of whoever is sitting here and whoever's in with the county. So I, I prefer to be extra, go the extra step, and that's one of the reasons why, is because I just think it's, it needs to be considered. So that's my reasoning.
I mean, they're not gonna just let her, it's someone that council has to put on the body, right?
I get you. I hear you.
And this body could change the rules entirely and put someone else on the Board.
Sure.
I'm simply saying, this is not like a random person off the street. This is a person whose name comes before this legislative body for explicit confirmation.
I hear you.
And so that's the, the safety gate, if you will.
I, I do understand that. I would just like to have a few more safety gates before we get to that point. That's on, that's my only point.
Okay. You know, on the grand scheme of things, this is pretty minor overall. You know, this feels like the sort of thing that if we, if we put it like this, that we will get the county to nominate one person one time, and then fast forward into the future, a year and a half out, that person resigns, steps down, they term out, whatever happens, and then it just sort of goes away.
I don't feel like it could go away, because we would be, have this in our process for them to put someone else forward. I mean, it's a process that we're starting. It doesn't disappear if we start the process. But that's just my reasoning.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gotta go on a county agenda, and, you know, I mean, you know, we could arm wrestle, but it just, it's just not that big of a deal.
I don't know if he'd win. Wait a minute now. I don't know if he'd win. Amen. I get you, man.
Or even rock, paper, scissors. But, you know, it's just, it's not that big of a deal, but I don't know, it just, to me, it looks like something that, you know, if you just fast forward into the future and looked in your crystal ball, that this person would be an empty seat at the Parks Board after the first person falls off.
And I do understand what you're saying, but I also like to take extra care, to be concerned about the future of when I'm not gonna be here and we're not gonna be here. And I wanna start a process that takes extra care. That's just why.
All right, well, there we are.
Man, if this is the first item on consent, we got a long way to go.
So.
Motion to approve, as written.
Do you have something, Councilmember Foster?
I was wondering, in our motion, do we need to also include, like, with a recommendation to appoint, to send this to Commissioners Court?
No, it's written, it's written as such, that the county would nominate.
Okay. Second.
You have a motion, second. Does anyone else have anything to discuss about it? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes. My Agenda Item passes. 5B, consider an act to approve Resolution Number R-2025.
Did you want to pull those in one entire block?
That's fine to do, I mean collectively.
You want, oh, collectively?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'll go through all of them. Is that what you want?
I guess you have to read all the headers, right?
Yes, I do have to read them all.
But I'm pulling them collectively.
So why are you pulling them all?
Just because the, I sent in some non-substantive edits, since they were published in the packet, and I wanted to just make sure that was in the motion, so that we didn't, because the public hasn't seen it, and I don't think y'all have seen the final document. It's just some grammar things.
Okay, so we can do each one individually, right? And it's, but they're all just for grammar, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So 5B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2025-194, awarding a community support service agreement to the Lost Pines Art Center for cultural arts programming and operations in amount of $167,950, and authorizing the City Manager to execute all necessary documents. Ms. Michaela, you have?
You've been talking on it for so long.
Thank you.
I don't know that we need to do a presentation. No, we really don't.
Okay, I just wanted to give y'all compliments, because we've been talking about this idea for four years, so this is wonderful. Thank you for doing all this legwork for transferring these community support partners to the community service agreements. So thank you for creating the templates that we'll use. And you don't have to say anything if you want, but I wanted to compliment you and give you kudos, because it's been a long time coming, and you worked it out.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make a motion to approve these with the non-substantive modifications.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, does anyone else have anything they wanna talk about on it? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, pass as unanimous. 5C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2025-195, awarding a community service agreement to the Opera House for cultural arts and theater services in the amount of $194,000, and authorizing the City Manager to execute all necessary documents.
Motion to approve with non-substantive modifications.
You have a motion, and we have a second? Second. Anyone have anything to say? All in favor? Yes.
I do. And maybe it'll save us some time. The non-substantive modifications don't require you to pull it from consent. They are grammar in nature and can be cleared at final signature.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
So is that gonna change the ones that you want pulled, or is it still some that you still would like to have pulled?
No, you can lump them in with the full consent agenda now.
So we no longer need to do 5D through 5G?
Sorry, CapCog does it totally differently, yeah.
5D through 5A.
I said the CapCog meetings run it differently, so I was, I was confused.
So, so we can just move on to 5H and 5K, and then the other ones will be included?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 5H.
So, Mayor.
Yes?
Point of order, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Oh, yes, sorry.
5C.
Yes, can I? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mayor Broton. Kirkland, all right, 5H. Consider an act on Resolution 2025-188, accepting the Nani and Oahu streets, Oahu streets, located in Water Control and Improvement District Number 2, and incorporating them into a list of city maintained streets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last about 15, 18 months, we have been working with Bastrop County and also Water Control and Improvement District Number 2, to get some streets finished up. These streets are part of a street tax that is being charged to the residents in that area. We've worked with WCID Number 2 and have now completed Nani and Oahu, and it is Oahu Court, not Oahu Street. And those are both in Tahitian. This would complete the final streets, and they would then go into the list of city maintained streets.
And City Manager, it's also Nani Lane instead of Street as well.
Yes.
True difference, yeah.
Motion to approve with the notation that is Oahu? Oahu?
Oahu.
Court, not Street.
And Nani Lane.
And Nani Lane.
Second.
Anyone else have any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And thank you, Council, if it passes.
I'd like to note that a tax has finally died. Yay for the residents.
Thank you. All right, Consent Agenda 5K. Consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-191, approving a permit to request the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of Chestnut for the 2026 Mardi Gras Parade.
Thank you, Mayor. And the only reason I pull this is I wanted to give Michaela an opportunity to explain to us, the layout's gonna change just a little bit this year, because we get to vote and change this closing, but we just wanted to understand, and the people, if you could tell them how it's gonna change.
Yes, absolutely. So the idea with this, with Mardi Gras, is we brought kind of an internal staff group together and kind of analyzed the event, and discussed some changes we'd potentially like to see with Mardi Gras. Last year's Mardi Gras parade was a little bit different, and it's not like a traditional one of our normal parades. And so we were kinda thinking through that and some things that some of the participants that usually participate in our Lighted Christmas Parade had expressed maybe some suggestions. So what we were proposing is duplicating what we do for Lighted Christmas Parade. Everybody knows and loves that parade, everybody understands the route. Selfishly, staff knows the drill, PD knows the drill, everybody knows the drill. So what we were kinda putting on the table is to shift Mardi Gras to be a very similar layout to what we do for Lighted Christmas Parade, or Lost Pines Christmas in general. So what we'd like to do is start out in the morning, we'll start out with an actual pedestrian parade. It'd be an umbrella walking parade at 10:00 a.m. So that's where, you know, you can decorate your umbrella to the nines and do a fun kickoff. We'll have the jazz band lead the way down Main Street to really kick off festivities, have the food vendors, the vendors down the street, all of the usual things, the gumbo cook-off led by the Juneteenth Committee. So all of those great, fun things. We are also in conversations right now of expanding and having two stages this year. So we'll have one on the north side of Maine and one on the south side of Maine. So those would run back and forth all day and pipe music throughout the day. And then we would essentially clear the road by 5, just like we do for Marion, Maine, clear the vendors out within the parade coming through at 6. So we just think this is gonna create a really streamlined process. And then once the parade goes through and goes by, we'll have a headliner on the main stage in front of the museum come out for a street dance. So it would be an all-day thing, keeping a lot of the same elements, the good old chicken chase, things like that, just kind of restructuring the day and then adding a couple things.
That's awesome. And I just wanted everyone to hear that, because it's so exciting. I mean, everybody loves it, and they're gonna love it even more now. So thank you so much, and all your group for doing that.
Thank you. And I will say, we are a little behind the ball, of course, on some of that advertising and getting that all up there, but our communication team, as well as Discover Bastrop team, is working diligently behind the scenes to make sure that is all posted online everywhere. So in the next coming weeks, get ready for full social media takeover, because we are blasting Mardi Gras. But of course, before that, we've got Wassel Fest and the Lighted Christmas Parade. So we are busy right now, to say the least. But just to end things, if I can, the Mardi Gras Ball will be January 30 at the Convention Center. Tickets will be going on sale for that in the coming weeks. And then the big downtown day will be January 31st. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. And thank you for everything and continuing on this established tradition. So, all right.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. That's Items 5D, E, F, G, 5I, J, K, and L, and that includes the one that we just discussed.
All right, we have a motion for that. Do we have a second? Councilmembers, do we have any discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, on to Agenda Item 6A. Consider an action to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-84 of the City Council of the, of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2025 in accordance with existing statutory requirements appropriating the various amounts herein attached as Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict therewith establishing effective date, and move to include on the November 25, 2025, City Council Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. Laura, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor. How are y'all this evening?
All right.
I bring to you the final budget amendment for fiscal year 25. It's kinda short and brief. This is gonna be mostly cleanup items. Amendment Item Number 1 and 2 are gonna be the only items that we bring to you requesting to use fund balance. I'm sorry, now that I look at it, I see that that's kinda small. For Amendment 1, my apologies, I need to remember to make that bigger. Amendment 1, due to some timing issues with the vendor, their FY '24 payment was not processed until FY '25. The FY '24 unused funds rolled into fund balance, so this amendment is requesting utilizing those said funds. For Amendment Item Number 2, this pertains to some transfers in and out for the columbarium for the cemetery fund. In terms of finance, if you have a transfer out somewhere, you need a transfer in somewhere so that your math is mathing. Unfortunately, at the preparation of the '24-'25 budget, the transfer out of the general fund was not included. So in the budget, it included the transfer in to the cemetery fund. This is a cleanup item to do the transfer out portion. And this would also serve to true up the cemetery's fund based on actuals for the columbarium. Item Number 3 pertains to some finance department expenditures. The finance departments saw an increase in credit card-related expenditures with the implementation of the new UB portal, as well as increase in professional services due to audit-related expenses, as well as contractual services. This amendment would take savings from other departments and reallocate them to coverage of this overage. So in essence, it's a net zero balance to the general fund. Here we go, two foot back, sorry. Amendment Number 4. Amendment Number 4 deals with a previous resolution passed by council, Resolution Number 2025-123, which authorizes the reimbursement of the general fund for capital-related expenditures. That resolution was passed. Amendment number four, um, deals with a previous resolution passed by council, resolution number 2025-123, which authoriz- authorize the reimbursement of the general fund for capital-related expenditures. That resolution was passed, this is just the cleanup budget item for it. And the final budget amendment, um, pertains to the reallocation within the hot funds for some Discover Bastrop expenses. Um, it did see some additional capital expenses related to 1311 Walnut Street, um, and Chestnut Street repairs, as well as some items at the Convention Center. This amendment would allocate, it increases revenue to offset the expense, therefore it has a zero net impact to the budget. Also, I would like to make a, um, revision to the recommendation. It did state to include on the November 24th agenda, however, that should actually read December 9th.
Right, that's what I was wondering. Like, I don't know what kind of meeting we have.
Made up a new date.
Y'all would be by y'all selves. John said he'll be here. Eating his turkey and dressing, I understand. All right. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Uh, council members, do you have anything we need to discuss?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No other, nothing else. All right, can I get a vote, please?
Aye.
All right. Oh, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes, yes, you can.
All right, passage, thank you. All right, now we are on to agenda item seven. Uh, it is 5:32, and council shall, for executive session, so, county, city council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.074, to deliver the appointment, employment, and evaluation of the city manager. It is now seven, 5:32, I don't know where seven came from. 5:32, we're going to an executive session.
It just feels like 7:32.
It feels like 7:32, it does. All right, everyone, it is now 5:38, and we're back from executive session. Um, no action was taken.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone have any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Bastrop. We'll see y'all here in about 40 minutes for our joint meeting workshop with the, uh, planning and zoning, so come back to us. Thank you.